Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the meeting of the City of Asheville Planning Commission for Tuesday, February fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two. The meeting is hereby called to order. And I want to thank everybody who is participating in tonight's meeting by teleconference. The meeting is being conducted consistent with Assembly Bill three sixty-one, Resolution Number two thousand twenty-one dash zero eight-eight, and California Government Code, Section five four nine five three E. Bear with us as we make use of the remote connection tools. And as always, if we have a conflict between an efficient meeting and taking the time to let people participate, we'll take the time to make sure people can participate. The commission meeting can be viewed live on the city's website, which is www.cityofacville.com, or on cable channel twenty-six. If you're planning to participate, please make sure you follow along on the telephone or the computer, not on channel twenty-six, because there is a broadcast delay. Instructions to participate can be found from the computer, can be found on the website, or you can connect by the link that's available on the agenda. If you're following along on the telephone and prompted for a participant ID, simply press the pound sign to be connected. Callers who wish to comment can raise their hand by pressing star nine. Depending upon the individual settings you have on your phone, you may need to then press star six once you've been unmuted by the host in order to open your microphone. And computer users or requests who wish to speak can click the raise hand button within their Zoom controls. And with that taken care of, let's go ahead with the roll call. Madam Secretary.
Good evening, planning commissioners. Chair McCauley.
Here.
Vice Chair Klein.
Here.
Commissioner Soldrich.
Here.
Beaumont.
Here.
Brecken.
Here.
Courtney.
Here.
And Lightfoot.
Here.
Chair, we have a quorum.
Thank you. If you would all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Secretary or Madam Director, do we have any communications?
We do not. Chair McCauley.
Okay. Next is the item number four, approval of the agenda. Are there any requests to modify the agenda? Seeing no requests, I will ask the secretary to call the roll for approval of the agenda.
Commissioner Soldrich.
Yes.
Beaumont.
Yes.
Brecken.
Yes.
Courtney.
Yeah.
Lightfoot.
Yes.
Vice Chair Klein.
Yes.
Chair McCauley.
Yes. The agenda is approved as shown. Item number five is business from the floor, and it's a time to address the commission with issues that are not on our agenda for tonight, but that are within the subject matter's jurisdiction. Maximum of three minutes per speaker or group of spokesperson in accordance with the government code and the back of the municipal code. And I am looking if anyone wishes to address this from business from the floor. I don't see any of our two remote participants raising their hand or anyone on the panelist list. Madam Secretary, anybody indicating to you that they wish to attend business from the floor?
I have no one.
Okay, then I will close business from the floor and move on to the consent calendar. Consent calendar is how we approve several things at once. In this case, the only thing on the consent calendar is the meeting minutes from January eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two. I will be abstaining because I did not attend the meeting. Do we have any amendments to the minutes? Seeing no proposed changes or amendments to the minutes. Vice Chair Klein just unmuted. Do you have a change?
Oh, no, I'm just ready to vote.
Okay, I'll ask the secretary to call the roll on the consent calendar.
Commissioners Soldrich.
Yes.
Beaumont.
Yes.
Brecken.
Yes.
Courtney.
Yeah.
Lightfoot.
Yes.
Vice Chair Klein.
Yes.
And Chair McCauley is abstaining.
Correct. Item number seven is the business item, one single item which is to receive the annual general plan progress report. Staff will turn that over to you for the presentation.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Tyra Hayes. I am the Senior Planner with Community Development. And tonight, I share with the commission the two thousand twenty-one annual status of the general plan report. Every year, state law requires the city to prepare this report in order to ensure that the documents that we will be discussing tonight remain active in their use. It allows us time to consider whether or not we need to make any course corrections in our policies. And it also allows us to set annual implementation priorities for the following year. Next slide, please. So the annual status of the general plan report goes by many names. I believe we had identified it as the annual general plan progress report. Sometimes it's called the annual progress report. We like to call it internally our general plan implementation plan. And the reason for this is the packet that has been provided to our commission tonight includes all the actions, programs, and measures that we have committed ourselves to do over the duration of these documents, and therefore it is an implementation plan. So together, our implementation plan includes all of our general plan policies. Oh, I'm sorry, our general plan actions. It includes our energy and conservation action strategy measures. For anyone not familiar with the ECAS, what that is, is our adopted local document that helps us meet our greenhouse gas reduction measures as required by state law. In addition to both our general plan actions and our ECAS measures, this document also identifies all the general plan AAR mitigation measures that were adopted at the time we adopted our general plan in two thousand fifteen. And most recently, it has included the mitigation measures identified by the supplemental AAR that was prepared as part of the vehicular miles traveled and ECAS update. And lastly, and this is where we're going to spend a good portion of our night, it includes numerous housing programs as they are identified in our housing elements. Next slide, please. So first, I thought we would start off by talking about all the things the city has been busy doing over two thousand twenty-one. The reason it says two thousand twenty is we had reported these implementation tasks as part of the two thousand twenty annual general plan progress report. So I know that it's a little confusing, but essentially what this is, is a list of all things that we've accomplished in two thousand twenty-one, and we kind of go over a little bit into this current year. So projects completed by staff include the vehicular miles traveled threshold as well as this accompanying environmental clearance document, which took place as a supplemental AIR to our general plan AIR. We completed the update for our energy and conservation action strategy. The city's parks and master, I'm sorry, parks and recreation master's plan was adopted in May of two thousand twenty-one. And though it technically occurred this calendar year, we wanted to take this moment to let everyone know that we have completed our downtown specific plan as of February eighth, two thousand twenty-two. And we have also received adoption, or we've introduced the comprehensive zoning code update to our council, and they approved that first reading also on February eighth, two thousand twenty-two. So as you can see, we've been quite busy, but we're far from done. Next slide, please. As I mentioned earlier, one of the primary reasons behind this report is to set annual implementation priorities for this calendar year. So while we have completed a lot in the past, we have plenty more to do in the future. And based on that, staff has come up with the following list of recommended priority tasks. Largely, these are projects that are already under, in progress, and where we have received direction from city council. Those tasks include amending the city's infrastructure and facility plan, finalizing the Assembly Bill sixteen hundred Development Impact D study. For anyone familiar with the AB sixteen hundred DIS study, that is the study in which the city looks at all the programs and facilities it provides to residents and determines how much is going to need to be charged to new development in order to continue to provide those services and infrastructure needs to new areas of development. It also should be noted that this has been an ongoing project. And as such, at the next city council meeting, which is scheduled for February twenty-second, there will be an AB sixteen hundred study session. And we are hoping that the AB sixteen hundred study will be available for public review in the spring of this year. Moving on, while we have successfully adopted our downtown specific plan, there's now time that we turn our attention to implementing that plan. So staff is currently working with downtown business owners, our downtown business improvement district, the Chamber of Commerce, and others to identify priority implementation measures as it relates to our downtown specific plan. We're also going to be starting work on our municipal service review, called the MSR for short. And what MSR is, is a comprehensive analysis of the city's ability to provide municipal services such as water, sewer, fire, and safety protection to its residents. But it's also looking at the city's ability to provide those same services and infrastructure needs to areas that the city would like to consider annexing within the near term, which is identified as being within the next five years. The MSR is required to be updated every five years by state law. And the last time we adopted our MSR was two thousand seventeen. So as you can tell, we're now in two thousand twenty-two. The five-year timeline is coming up, and thus we will be focusing on this this calendar year. Concurrently with the MSR, we will be creating our urban reserve inventory. So for those of you who are around, in two thousand fifteen when we updated our general plan, we had identified certain areas east of Leachertown, east of Leachertown Road as urban reserve. The reason for this is the general plan document is a twenty-year document. It was adopted in two thousand fifteen, and it has a horizon year, or you can think of it as an end date of two thousand thirty-five, that's twenty years of development. At the time that we had prepared our general plan, it was determined that we had identified more residential land east of Leachertown Road than necessary. It, what happened is it took us beyond the two thousand thirty-five general plan horizon date. As such, it was determined by the planning commission and the city council that we would scale back the amount of land east of Leachertown Road in terms of identified residential development and identify and preserve those lands for future development at another time. Following the adoption of our general plan, the urban reserve ordinance was adopted, and it was at that time that the city council decided it wants to maintain a twenty-year rolling inventory of residential land. So to put that another way, we've had our general plan in place now for just under seven years, and during that time, we have developed land. The question now is, do we have enough remaining land designated for residential development to get us out to the year two thousand forty-two, that's twenty years from now? So that is the purpose of our urban reserve inventory. And if it is dated, or I'm sorry, if it has, if it is identified that we require additional residential lands to keep that rolling twenty-year inventory, at that point in time, the city council may consider converting some of the urban reserve lands to other development plan uses. Okay, moving on. We are currently working on both our housing strategy and our housing element update. You're going to be hearing a lot about our housing elements today, but please keep in mind, this is the two thousand twenty-one general plan progress report. And therefore, everything we discuss tonight applies to our existing general, or I'm sorry, applies to our existing housing element, not the one that we are currently preparing for the next housing element cycle. And lastly, I mentioned that we had adopted our ECAS recently, and one of the things that we are going to be prioritizing is implementing that document within the year two thousand twenty-two. So with that, I'm getting ready to transition into the housing elements. So I thought this might be a good time to stop and ask the commission if they have any questions. Tonight's item is a business item, and it's really meant to be a conversation between staff and our planning commission to ensure that you have a good working understanding of all the documents we are discussing tonight.
Commissioners, does anybody have any questions for Tyra or comments to make at this time? Tyra, I see no hands up or microphones unmuted. So let's go ahead and proceed, and we'll make sure we come back after each element and at the end to finish up on questions or comments. But go ahead, Steph.
Thank you. Next slide, please. Oh, there was supposed to be a title here, and this is, we are now transitioning to our housing element discussion. I thought I would take this opportunity to share with the commission a drone photo of the Harbison Townhomes, which are currently under construction near the corner of Allison Drive and Harbison. Next slide, please. So the, oh, forgive me, this is supposed to say the two thousand twenty-one housing element report. So the housing element is a mandatory general plan element, and element is just another word for chapter. The current housing element, thank you, Albert. The current housing element covers the planning phase between two thousand fifteen until January first, two thousand twenty-three. This document includes all the policies that the city has adopted to address the various income groups and various needs of certain groups. So when I say certain groups, I'm talking about groups that have been identified as special groups by state law, and that includes people who may be, they may have disabilities. They may be large families. They may be members of the military. They may be senior, things of that nature. State law does identify special groups in which we must provide the opportunity for housing for. And just to that, it should be noted that for any of you who have seen the packet, you're going to notice that all the housing element tables look a little different than anything else you'll ever see from community development. The reason for that is the housing element has state mandated standardized forms. So I do apologize if a few of them were a little difficult to read. And the purpose of tonight's meeting is to ensure that the planning commissioners are comfortable with the information provided to them, and I'm hoping to be able to do that by discussing them in greater detail. The submission of the housing element report specifically is a requirement of most grants in order to receive any kind of funding. So it is imperative that we get our annual progress report on our housing elements submitted annually. And since inception, way back when, the city has always been on time submitting this report. Next slide, please. So first, we're going to start off with the basics. Pretty much everything we do with our housing elements revolves around the regional housing needs allocation, ORINA for short. What the ORINA is, is the city's fair share of housing as determined by the state. So through the existing housing element planning period, which again is two thousand fifteen, and here I put two thousand twenty-two, the reason for that is technically this planning period ends on December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two. Our ORINA total was one thousand eighty-four units. However, those numbers are further broken down by affordability levels, as you see on your screen. Next slide, please. So what do those affordability levels mean? So the Department of Housing and Community Development has determined what constitutes a household income level, or housing income category based on the county's area median income, and they also base it on a household of four people. So in two thousand twenty-one, Solano County's area median income was ninety-nine thousand three hundred dollars for a household of four people. Anyone who's making fifty percent of that area median income is determined to be a very low health, income household. Anyone making eighty percent of that area median income is low income. Anyone making, ooh, anyone making up to one hundred and twenty percent of the area median income is considered a moderate income household. And anyone making over a hundred and twenty percent of the area median income is considered an above moderate income household. Next slide, please. What does that all mean? So here we're showing what the current housing market looks like, not only in Vacaville, but throughout Solano County. As I mentioned, in two thousand twenty-one, the housing, the Department of Housing and Community Development determined that the median income for Solano County was just under a hundred thousand dollars. That said, the median sales price county-wide was just about five hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Who is that affordable to? Well, it's been determined that the maximum affordable sale price for a household that has been determined to be a moderate income household, and again, that's someone who's making a hundred and twenty percent of the area median income, or in our case, just under a hundred and twenty thousand dollars annually, can only afford a home that costs no more than four hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Now, if you look to the chart, you'll see Vacaville, which is third from the bottom on the chart, our median sales price was five hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. That is to say that the majority of homes within the city of Vacaville are only affordable to those households making above moderate income. For people on the other side of the spectrum, the low-income households who are making no more than fifty percent of the area median income, they can only afford a home that costs no more than two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which is not possible within, within Solano County. Next slide, please.
Tyra, Chairman McCauley here. Question for you when we look at this, but I think I know the answer, but we're really just looking at Solano County incomes and prices, even though we're in a regional housing market, and we don't necessarily know what is the, I would say, kind of the housing market regional income when you start to look at Marin and Contra Costa and Napa and some of the Sacramento counties, which probably have, in a lot of those higher incomes than we do. So this is just Solano, not looking at any of the other regional players, obviously. Is that correct?
You are correct, Mr. Chairman, and that brings up a good point. If the median sales price for homes in Vacaville is five hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, who's buying them? We are currently undergoing both our housing element update as well as our housing strategy, but we can only assume that a large portion of the new homes being purchased in Vacaville are being done from people out of the city. Next slide, please. Rental units. So we're going to use the same methodology we had done for the for sale units. It has been determined that the maximum affordable rent, a moderate income household of four people, is two hu, or two thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. The cost for the, for the median cost for a apartment in Vacaville is just under that amount at two thousand seven hundred and, sorry, two hundred, two thousand seven hundred and twenty-nine. What this means is our apartments are generally affordable to moderate income households. So if you remember back to the pre, or one of the previous slides, a moderate income household makes eighty percent of the area median income, which in this case means that that household of four is making just under seventy-eight thousand dollars. Now, I should like to note, and I usually do this annually, everything we show here is for, is really just illustrative in nature, only because we cannot, or we can't definitely identify how much a household, you know, has in terms of its other financial commitments. So majority of these numbers are strictly, or they're strictly identified by exceeding no more than thirty percent of that household's income. Next slide, please. So as I mentioned, the housing element has a very lengthy Excel workbook filled with standardized forms. And given how small the print is on these forms, I thought it would be advantageous to share with our committee as well as, for our commission, as well as with any viewers, what these tables say. So Table A identifies the housing applications that were submitted within two thousand twenty-one. We had three residential housing applications submitted, and those include the Alamo Creek subdivision, which consisted of a hundred and thirty-one single-family units. We had the Allison apartment. It originally came in as a higher unit count, but as of last week, it was approved by our city council with a hundred and thirty-five multifamily units. And lastly, we received an application for McMurtry Estates, which consists of twenty-four single-family units and, and is located within the right McMurtry area. Next slide, please. Table A two of the workbook identifies the residential permits issued. Now, please note, the table I have provided to the planning commission is a simplified version of what the city is required to submit to the state. Unfortunately, it's impossible to print that table. It's meant to be reviewed electronically. However, this is probably the most important information, and that is what are our active residential communities? In other words, two-sling permits. In two thousand twenty-one, we saw a large number of permits being issued to the Brighton Landing subdivision located east of Leachertown Road, North Village, which is located north of Vacaville Parkway, Vanden Estates, which is located just south of South Town, Farmstead, which is an infill development located at the corners of Fruitvale and North Orchard. Then we had a few permits issued for Parkside Green, which I believe is also located in the vicinity of Vanden Estates. We had a handful issued for Ashen Place, also in the Vanden area. And lastly, we had permits issued for the Harbison Townhomes, and those are currently under construction. But that was, I've shown you a picture of that subdivision as part of our introduction to the housing element discussion. Just as a reminder, the median sales, citywide sales price in the city of Vacaville in two thousand twenty, in two thousand twenty-one was five hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, with the median citywide rent being just under twenty-eight hundred dollars. So I did a quick review, and it seems that all, well, nearly all of the current subdivisions shown on the screen are selling at the mid-five-hundred-thousand-dollar range and higher. I do not have information for the Harbison Townhomes, and therefore I cannot tell you what the rent will be for those. Next slide, please. So Table B is a summary of the residential permits issued by affordability. I would like to note that there was an error in your packet, and what you see on the screen are the correct numbers of residential permits issued in two thousand twenty-one. We issued twenty-seven permits for very low-income households, and that was part of the Pony Express Senior Apartments project, which is currently under construction at the corner of Elmira Road and Aegean. We issued thirty-three permits for low-income households. That's also part of the Pony Express Senior Apartment project. We issued low, or ten permits for accessory dwelling units, which we're trying to verify can be placed into our low-income household category. And lastly, the remainder of the residential permits issued in two thousand twenty-one have been deemed to be affordable to the above moderate income households. In total, we had seven hundred and ninety residential permits issued in two thousand twenty-one. Next slide, please. So there's several tables, as I had mentioned, in our workbook. I just wanted to point out that there were several tables within that workbook that were not applicable to the city of Vacaville this year, and that includes Table C. This is a site that would, that were identified or result to accommodate a shortfall in our housing need that does not apply to the city of Vacaville. We currently have adequate land to meet our RENA. We did not include Table D. That's a program implementation status. To be honest, I cannot recall what that is. Sorry to be so candid. But that was a table that was not applicable to the city of Vacaville. Table E is a commercial development bonus summary. So what that is, there was a new law that went to effect either in 2018 or 2019, which did extend the density bonus law to developers who are developing low-income households in conjunction with commercial developments, and they're allowed to receive benefits for both developments, assuming they provide a certain number of affordable units. That has not been used in Vacaville as of now. Lastly, we did not include Table G. This is a summary of the locally owned lands included in the housing element itself that have been sold, leased, or otherwise disposed of. So that's to say, did we remove any of the housing element sites identified in our existing housing elements? And the answer to that is no, they all remain residential. Next slide, please. Table F. This is a summary of the units that have been rehabbed, preserved, or acquired in order to ensure that they remain viable. In 2021, the city acquired Lincoln Corner Apartments, consisting of 134 affordable units. They also acquired Vacaville Meadows Apartments, which consists of 65 affordable units. So these are affordable units that will not be lost due to lack of maintenance or being sold to a market rate developer. Next slide, please. And our last table is a summary of locally owned surplus sites that were declared to be surplus. So last year, I believe it was, two sites had been identified as surplus, and that includes 91 Town Square, which is the city's town square, as well as 7050 Leisure Town Road. Next slide, please. Okay, so that concludes the official housing element standardized form. However, we also, we being the city, use this report to evaluate and monitor one of our general plan policies, which states that we need to strive to maintain a citywide housing mix of approximately 75% single-family and 25% multifamily attached housing. So as you see here, we have information dating back well before 2015 in terms of how many residential permits were issued for single-family homes and how many were issued for multifamily. And when everything is added up, we are currently at roughly 78% single-family homes and 22% multifamily homes. That's something that the planning commission and the city council might want to take into consideration as we move on during our housing element update process. And last but not least, there is no slide for this. You know, as you've seen through your packet, this is a very lengthy report. The, in addition to providing information pertaining to our general plan and our housing element, the city is also required to annually prepare and submit an addendum to the annual housing element progress report. And this report focuses on affordable housing activities per affordable housing related provisions of the California redevelopment law. If the planning commission has any questions regarding this report, we do have Housing Director Emily Cantu in the audience, and I'm sure she'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. Next slide, please. Okay.
Tyra, Tyra, hold on for a second. Commissioner Whitefoot has his hand up. Ralph, go ahead. You have the floor.
I think so. I thought it was a, on part of that report and what that report's going to entail. So on, on Slide 13, you're speaking to, or about ADUs, and it seemed like you were questioning whether or not ADUs could be classified as low income. Is that, is something changing that we're not aware of, or is there a current debate on that?
The easy answer is yes. Unfortunately, the rest of the answer is not so easy. So under the current housing element, HCD, that's the California Department of Housing and Community Development, used to allow all jurisdictions to count their accessory dwelling units as being affordable to low-income households. Since that time, and in light of all the new housing legislation that's been passing since 2017 or so, that law is now changing. So what we are now required to do is provide documentation as to whether or not these units are truly affordable to any given income group. So what our consultants are doing for our, our current housing element update is they're working with other jurisdictions to find a way to generalize the affordability point for accessory dwelling units. And in our case, more than likely, they're going to acquire and analyze all the rental rates for ADUs within Solano County, and then determine where the price points are for each individual income group. So unfortunately, we don't have a clear-cut answer as of right now, but we do anticipate having one in the near future with the creation of our housing element update.
Ralph, did that answer your question?
Yep, thank you very much.
Thank you. Do other commissioners have questions to ask or comments to make right now? I see Commissioner Aldrich, and then Fortney, and then Beaumont. So Jan, you have the floor.
I had a question about the page eight, and maybe you're going to cover it later on, the new legislation about being able to divide your lot up for four different dwelling units, could be duplexes, could be ADUs, or whatever. Are you going to be covering that, or is this the time to ask the question?
Okay.
Go ahead, Tyra.
Oh, thank you. So I do apologize if I've confused anyone with my staff report. You know, I really want to emphasize that this report is on our existing housing element. However, housing legislation is not static. It's changing annually. And as you saw on your staff report, SB9, the urban lot line law, is the most, now I'm going to say provocative housing law that has been passed in many, many years. So I thought it would be prudent to include that in your packet so that our planning commissioners could be well informed of this bill, given that we are receiving questions from interested homeowners. Let's see, one moment. I just provided a slide at the very end of this, which is Slide 20. Uh, but would you mind going to Slide 20 for me, please? All right. So here I borrowed a wonderful graphic from the city of Campbell, located in Southern California. And what this does is it graphically illustrates what SB9 now permits certain property owners within single-family developments to do. So subject to various qualifications, such as the overall lot size and the city's ability to provide services, single-family home property owners are allowed to simply put, divide their properties into two pieces, and then further develop accessory dwelling units on each piece. So it's a very long-winded way to say a single-family zoned property can now have up to four residential units on it. That can appear in many different ways, and that was the purpose of including the graphic in your packet and as shown on the screen. A person owning a single-family home within a single-family zoned designation, or designation zone, can choose to either leave their home as is, construct a new single-family home in the back, add an accessory dwelling unit, and create a junior accessory dwelling unit, which we don't typically talk about too much. I'm more than happy to do so if anyone wants to discuss that further. But they can also simply divide their property in half legally and just create a new single-family home. So now you've got what was once one home on one property. You have two homes on two properties. It may stop there. Then again, each of those new property owners can construct a new accessory dwelling unit. So now we're up to four units on one property. Now that said, I don't have it all memorized quite yet, but there are requirements. Some of those requirements include that no single-family lot can be smaller than 2,400 square feet. Once a lot has been split by this urban lot line law, it cannot be split again, and the original property owner must reside on-site for three years. So this is now in place. It became effective January 1st of this year. And it is permitted by rights. This isn't something that the city can stop or impede in any way. And as those are very recently adopted, New Land Development Code does address it within its chapters.
Commissioner Aldrich, did that, did that answer your question?
Yeah, I just have one word to say wow. Yes, it did answer my question.
Thanks, Jan. Next is Commissioner Fortney. Mike, you have the floor.
Yeah, thanks, Chair. Tyra, I may be way too early to ask this question, but my, my topic is AFF8, the affirmatively furthering fair housing, and how it relates to the housing element. I know it'll be more impactful coming from you and consultants probably down the road. But those guidelines that have come out by HCD, are, are the programs that you have listed in Table D, would, would those meet those requirements of their guidelines?
No, it does not.
No, okay. Could you maybe give us a little education on what, what we as a public agency should, what our duties are, what our duties are, and what we should be looking for in the future as a, as a planning commission?
That is a wonderful question. And if you'll entertain me for just a moment, I would like to reserve that discussion for a joint meeting of our planning commission and city council scheduled for March 29th. During that meeting, our consultant team will be assisting staff identify kind of the fundamentals of our housing element, the affirmatively affording fair housing component of the housing element, as well as our environmental justice element. To put it really simply, the affirmative, affirmatively affording fair housing is almost like a second housing element that specifically addresses perceived and real inequalities that have occurred over the past decade.
Gotcha. So we'll be, we'll be in a joint study session. Oh, perfect. Thank you very much for that.
Thanks, Mike. Next is Commissioner Beaumont. Doug, you have the floor.
Thanks. Hey, Tyra, I may be out, uh, not sure what's going on. Do you have more presentations, like on the implementation plan and things?
I do not.
Okay, then I have a question on the implementation plan. We just finalized the land use and development code, and I went through the implementation plan, and there's 22 different land use and development codes that are either revisions or amends. And I just wondered, how does the land use development code that we just finalized get amended? Is it semi-annually, annually, when one thing gets done? How does that work?
Oh, okay. So there's two ways to look at that. A comprehensive land use and development code doesn't occur that often. Most oftenly, that occurs after the adoption of a general plan that typically occurs every 20 years or so. Now that said, the land development code is similar to all the documents we're talking about tonight, and that is, says to say that it is meant to be a living document. So it can be amended, I believe, two times a year. I'm sure someone here will correct me if I'm wrong on that. But this is the first comprehensive update to our development code since, I believe, ooh, gosh, 1992. That said, we did a pretty intensive technical update for our land development code in 1999, and this is the first time I have seen our land development code be completely rewritten in order to be more user-friendly and streamlined.
So basically, the ones in progress will be put together either semi-annually or annually, and then inserted into the finalized land use development code?
Forgive me, I'm not sure I'm understanding your question.
Well, we have 22 outstanding revisions or amendments to the code that's in this implementation plan, and I'm just wondering how they get put into the finalized version that we just finalized? Once they're done.
Thank you for that clarification. They will be put in as they are done. Ideally, given, you know, staffing resources, what we'll likely do, and what we've done historically, is we'll package a whole lot of them together at once. Like, we might do 10 that are kind of related at once, and then bring it to the planning commission and then to the council.
Okay, great. Yeah, that, that helps a lot. Thank you.
Next up is Commissioner Brecken. Wendy, you have the floor. Go ahead.
Hi, um, this is Commissioner Brecken. So I have a number of questions, but I wanted to start with taking backing off of the questions about the ADU and, you know, SB9 and 10, I guess. What we do have control over as a city is some kind of regulation on parking. So while, you know, the single-family dwelling units that we have in, in all our neighborhoods may be changing to more ADUs or duplexes or what have you, they can't, we have an ordinance in place that would require sufficient parking so that, as it is now, some of our neighborhoods are, we're having problems, you know, with neighbors because we have too, too many cars, because we have more than one family living in a big house, and there's four or five cars and not enough room on the street to park them. So that's a problem that the city locally can deal with, and I think we need to. How, how would we go about getting an ordinance in place so that we could base approval of ADUs or duplexes or single, you know, more single-family homes and backyards? There should be sufficient parking so that's not creating, I mean, hostilities in the neighborhood.
Thank you for that question. Oh, I'm getting feedback. Is mine, am I moving your phone, please? Thank you. So city ordinances must follow state laws, and the way the law is currently written regarding accessory dwelling units is ADUs cannot be required to have more than one parking space per unit or bedroom, whichever is left. Specifically, we can only require one parking space, and that parking space can be provided either as tandem parking or on a driveway. We cannot require any additional guest parking.
Tyra, does that mean that if we wish to affect ADUs, we'd first have to change the parking requirements for houses themselves so that it was a higher standard? And that way, there would be more parking required on-site so that if an ADU is developed, then there would be adequate on-site? Would that be a, a way that if we wish to approach it, we could?
That is a very feasible option.
Okay.
Sorry, this is Director Morris. I, I wanted to add something. The state law actually specifically states that a local agency cannot impose objective zoning standards, subdivision standards, or design standards that would have the effect of physically precluding the construction of up to two units, et cetera. So essentially, the state anticipated, I believe, that local jurisdictions may want to get creative with establishing higher parking requirements, for example, for existing homes, and the law is pretty specific on that. And we will be presenting, as Tyra indicated, more information on SB9 at the March 29th study session, but there are a lot of very strict parameters that the state put forth with this new legislation, unfortunately.
Thanks, Director. Commissioner Brecken, you still have the floor, so go ahead with other questions or comments, and then Vice Chair Klein after that.
Um, all right. Commissioner Beaumont mentioned a number of the, well, amendments to the code had to be made, and there was a, a number of elements, I'm going to call them, I don't know what to call them, where it said C land use, A dot 1 dot 12, or something like that. And but that specific element, 1.812, or whatever it was, said something about buffer zones. So So I'm a little confused on what all that means. I can specifically state what my concerns are about. Let's see. Looking for my, so like, for example, oh geez, I'm trying to remember. The projects. Well, I'll just let you talk, but I think you know what I mean. You referred to, oh, I know, I read this a few days ago. And you referred to a specific L A point twelve or whatever. And there was like, I don't know, twenty things that referred to that. And it didn't give you an indication of when those things were scheduled to go or what was going to happen. So you talked to that. Oh, it was L A, it was L U A eleven point two. And I think, you know, shopping centers was one of the things, resource management, tree protection, there was all kinds of things, toxic air contaminants, maybe.
So I'm just gonna open, okay, there we go. Okay, so just make sure everyone's following along. It sounds like you are referring to the general plan implementation table. And what that table is, is a summary of all the general plan actions as identified within the general plan itself, nothing else. So those are the things that we committed ourselves to doing upon adoption of our general plan in twenty fifteen. Now, everything that the city does outside of our human resources department must be consistent with our general plan. So what this table is also doing is identifying all the places where our existing land development code is, one, consistent with our general plan, but probably more importantly, how it's going to implement all the actions of the general plan. So when you see anything that says, say, L U A three point one, anything with that type of beginning refers to the land use element or chapter of the general plan. Then when you scroll over or look over to the status, we often identify chapters of our land development code. In most cases, if not all cases, the land development code is the implementation document of the general plan. The general plan is the huge comprehensive master plan that governs everything that occurs within the city of Asheville. And then land development code tells you specifically how to do it.
Okay, so if I can, like COS A twelve point one says amend the land use and development code to identify land use sources of toxic air contaminants and sensitive users. The timeframe is unscheduled. And the status is C status of action L U A eleven point two, which is repeated all over the place. So I guess number one is okay, why is it unscheduled? It seems like that would be really important to know where the air toxics are or contaminants. But then when are we planning on doing a timeline? And what does the status of L U A eleven point two mean? I mean, that's meaningless to me.
Okay, I do apologize. I do not have it open right now. But I do want to note that the general plan is a twenty-year document. We are now entering the seventh year of this document. And therefore, our to-do list, which is essentially the same thing as our implementation plan, is very lengthy. So if you recall, at the very beginning of this presentation, I had mentioned one of the main purposes of this report is to set annual implementation priorities. So the things that you see on this list have either been deemed annual priorities in the past, or they were things that city staff took upon themselves to complete as time allows. Now that said, you know, we have hundreds, quite literally hundreds of general plan actions that we must implement. And we still have thirteen years to do so. What we do is we look through them and we see which ones we can do within the next year and then propose that to both the planning commission and city council. From there, we can be directed by councils to either prioritize or, you know, not prioritize any specific implementation measure. So the implementation measure you had mentioned, actually, I'm sorry, the land use development code section you had mentioned or the action just simply hasn't made it to the list yet. And therefore, we don't have a date scheduled.
Yeah, I'm just going to kind of note that it looks like a lot of the environmental issues haven't, either are in progress or haven't been scheduled. And maybe that's something to talk to city council about. I'm not sure. Another issue is Quinby ordinance. I see that that's, I'm not sure if that's scheduled or not scheduled. But what the Quinby ordinance means is, because I just learned about this from my fellow commissioners, is that you basically have to have a part of a certain space level, a certain acreage based on the population that's going to be living in the new development. And it and I guess the ordinance ensures that. Is that correct, Tyra? Am I getting that right?
If it is adopted and written as such, it would, yeah.
Yeah. So, I mean, I guess I was confused, first of all, because don't we normally, like for developments, don't we normally have parks in there? Why wouldn't we just adopt an ordinance to put that into place?
So going back a little bit, first, I want to note that the city does have its own service requirements and standards as it pertains to parks and development. I believe it is our intent to always have a park within point five miles of every residential home. There is a map on the state in the general plan, if not in the general plan E I R. It does show that the large majority of the city does meet our requirement. That said, there's always room for improvement, and that's something that we are working on. We have recently completed our, you know, city of Asheville Parks and Recreation Master Plan. And that also identified service ratios and plans on how they're going to implement various programs, policies, ordinances to meet the goals of that document. So I do not know whether or not our Parks and Department, sorry, Parks and Recreation Department has scheduled or even considered a recent Quinby ordinance. That in twenty sixteen, the community development department worked with Parks and Recreation. And we did have a study session with the planning commission at that time. And for reasons I can't quite recall, we were told to put that project on hold. So this is something that we will most likely have to report back to you on to find out what its current status is.
Okay, thank you. Also, it seems like sometimes a general plan is not followed. It seems like sometimes, for example, for, I think, the Oak Grove Apartments and Farmstead, I don't think those are part of our original general plan. It seems to me, once we, I mean, not that I'm against those projects, but it seems like we should have some way to stop and check to see, hey, if this isn't in the general plan, then we have to have maybe an ordinance that gets approved by the city council to make sure that what we really want to do is change the general, general plan, not just do it. So that's kind of one idea that I'd like to kick around. I don't know if you have thoughts of that.
All projects that are processed through community development must be consistent with our general plan. That is state law. And if you look at your staff reports, typically, you will find a section that demonstrates, you know, findings as to how that project is consistent with the general plan. In some cases, if a project does not appear to be consistent on the surface, there may be a policy within the land development code that explains why it may appear not to be consistent, though it is if you read the actual ordinance itself. I apologize, I don't have a good example on top of my mind right now. But if a project comes in and they are not consistent with our general plan, they are required to apply for a general plan amendment. That's not something that we have any kind of say in because it is a state mandate.
Tyra, Chair McCully for a second. Is there something in the findings when a project is approved by the commission and the city council where we have to make a finding that a project is consistent with the general plan? Is that a standard finding?
You know, I think I'm going to defer to Planning Manager Vivand or perhaps Senior Planner. You know, they're a little more familiar with that than I am at this time.
And Wendy, sorry to interrupt on your questions. I don't want to, I just, I'm wondering if that's something that we typically do to, so that we're addressing your question there. Payman, is that something you want to address?
Sure, certainly. Good evening, everyone. This is Payman, City Planner. Yeah, you're right. Every project that we bring either to the planning commission or planning commission onto city council or staffable projects even, requires to make findings. These findings are in our code. We have findings for design reviews, for conditional use permits, for zone changes, and including general plan amendments. So yes, we have to make findings for projects regardless of, you know, the application type. Every application has a set of findings that we have to make.
And then the flip side on that would be if a commissioner felt that a project was not consistent with the general plan, they would vote to not approve the project based on the finding the project is not consistent. Would that be an approach that would work?
Yes, absolutely. And that's happened in the past where staff has sort of laid out the reasons why a project meets findings. And the commission or in the council sometimes has said, well, we disagree. We don't think it meets his findings. Or conversely, when we've said, you know, it doesn't make a finding, the commission certainly has stepped in sometimes to say that they do find in fact that it needs a finding. So it is, it is staff's job to lay out the reasons why and how a project meets the findings. And the planning commission reviews that and would either agree with staff that the findings can be made or disagree with staff.
So Wendy, that gives you a process view, whether you think we should change it or not. At least we have a view of how that right now works. And you still have the floor, so I'll turn things back over to you.
Thank you. So, yeah, I mean, this is a huge work, a huge project, and I got to appreciate all the work that went into it. I just had a, you know, a couple of comments and questions about the urban reserve. I don't know, does the planning commission review and approve that? Or does that go straight to city council? Or does that ever get looked at by either?
It most definitely is looked at by the city council. This is the first time that we have ever considered, take that back. Let me rephrase that. This is the first time we are doing an urban reserve land inventory following the twenty fifteen general plan update. I do know it does have to be, has to be ultimately approved by the city council. And I do apologize, I can't recall if it's required to go to planning commission, but I believe it does.
Okay. And is that dictated by a regional group like LAFCO or something like that? Or is that just us, the city saying, doesn't LAFCO have to approve the urban reserve? How does that work?
So the city decided to adopt the urban reserve land use designation itself. LAFCO is not involved in that. However, however, you brought the good point. LAFCO, which is the Solano County Local Agency Formation Committee, they are the state entity that is granted the power to approve or disapprove annexations. So one thing I really didn't talk about too much, only because it's something we'll discuss at a future meeting, is concurrently with the creation and preparation of the municipal service review, we are required by state law to also reestablish and examine our sphere of influence line. The sphere of influence, for our purposes, essentially identifies all those areas that the city would like to annex at some time in the future. Now, if you read the strict writing of the, I'm just going to call it the LAFCO law for simplicity purposes, it states that you're not supposed to designate any lands outside your city limits within your sphere of influence unless you can prove that there is a need to annex and develop that land within five years. So to put that another way, LAFCO has a five-year rolling review period for properties that could be considered for annexation. So as I mentioned previously, when we adopted our general plan in twenty fifteen, we had identified all the lands east of Leisure Town Road primarily for residential development. I believe at that time, we thought based on historical permit issuance numbers, that would have given us roughly, what, forty-two years of residential development. It was far more than we would need under this general plan, which has a horizon year of twenty thirty-five. So what we were able to do is we scaled back those lands east of Leisure Town Road that were identified for various land uses, but keep them within our sphere of influence, thus letting the county and LAFCO know we would like to annex them some point in the future. But we're going to identify all those properties, the properties we are now identifying as urban reserves, as long-term annexations. That is to say, we do not anticipate them annexing any sooner than five years. But at some point in the future, if the city does deem the need and desire to annex additional land for development, we can do so. And we can do so with a clean slate. That is to say, we can, you know, work with the property owner and also work with the needs of the city to assign those properties the landy designation needed to serve the best interest of the city. So that's how we end up with urban reserve. Now that said, after the general plan was adopted in twenty fifteen, the city council decided that they wanted to adopt an urban reserve ordinance, which then said, we will evaluate the city's needs for additional residential properties every five years concurrently with the creation of the municipal service review. The reason those two are tied together is whenever you want to annex a piece of property, it must be consistent with the information provided in and about your sphere of influence and all the information identified in the municipal service review. To put that simply, you cannot annex lands if you cannot provide appropriate city infrastructure or facilities or services to it. So that's where we are right now. We have not converted any urban reserve lands since its creation back in twenty fifteen. But we are being asked to do so as part of a small subdivision near the farm at Alamo Creek. And we do have other developers also inquiring about the potential of converting those lands. So sometime during the year twenty twenty-two, along with the preparation of our MSR, we will be taking a look at what our current inventory and our current needs are for more residential land.
Okay, thank you for that comprehensive response. I just have a couple of comments and I'm done for now because I am taking up too much time. But I my concern is, is that with the ever-expanding sphere of influence of Asheville, that we're eating up prime agricultural land and that that be way, that there be a weighing and that, you know, we all consider, you know, what is the cost of building homes on agricultural land as well as open space? And what does that cost to wildlife? So I mean, those are my couple, as well as the population, as the population increases, what is the impact to resources? So anyway, that's my comments. Thank you so much.
Thanks Commissioner. Next up is Vice Chair Klein. Brandon, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you, Tyra, for this presentation. I, many of my questions have been answered. I was curious about the charge of affirmatively furthering fair housing as well as environmental justice and social justice and eliminating environmental racism. It sounds like we will have a joint session in March, so I'll reserve my comments on that until then. But just so that you're aware, I'm eagerly awaiting more on that, on those subjects. And the other question that I have is as to the issue with building bigger houses and having no concomitant parking considerations. This is a problem in Asheville. This is a problem in Vacaville. As, as we get more and more new construction. The houses are getting much bigger, they're getting closer together. And these ADUs will continue, the, the, the change in law as the ADUs is not going to ease the issue in, in more established areas of the city. So it seems to me like San Francisco does a great job of managing this issue. And I, I, I do understand that, that our ordinances must not contradict state law. However, there's nothing wrong with having a requirement that people move cars. Or in that there's street sweeping and that you have a requirement to have a permit to park in that, that neighborhood and that everyone gets one permit. If you have as many, or everyone gets a, whatever the state requirement is for parking on that lot. That we could issue one permit to the people who are taking advantage of that state law. Whether it be in the ADU situation, or it just be in the typical more common scenario in Vacaville. Where these developers are putting houses much closer together. And the streets and sidewalks are not really. It, it, it's just, it's a messed up situation if you live there, trust me. So I, I have to second Commissioner Brecken's comments on that. So I, with that background, I'll just ask specifically, is there any thought about a parking management strategy? That will go into, consider some of these realities that have been brought up. You know, by Commissioner Brecken, me, and I think that we also brought these up at the housing element. The sole, the one housing element meeting that we had.
This is Director Morris. I just want to respond briefly, Vice Chair Klein. Yes, we can look at parking strategies and parking management strategies as a city. And there may be some potential to do that in order to try to help these new laws keep neighborhoods the way we like them here in Vacaville. And we just say though, from experience at multiple cities that have residential parking permit programs, that they are challenging. They require active, ongoing parking enforcement by the city. And at this point, the city of Vacaville doesn't even have parking enforcement downtown where we're aware it's sorely needed. So it would, it's a big lift to just, because if you have a law and then you don't enforce it, it's pretty much not going to be helpful to achieving the objectives. But that your interest and your ideas are definitely noted, and it's something that staff can consider and follow up on.
Thank you for that, Erin. I'll just say that it's miserable in the neighborhoods. Where you'll have a house that, that might have eight, you know, six or six bedrooms. If you include the garage, a lot of times in multi-generational households, they'll put people in the garage. And they, they each have cars. So if, if you have a house that has two master bedrooms and, and one upstairs, one downstairs, one downstairs and multiple bedrooms. Then you're not dealing with reality if you think that you only need a driveway for two cars. So I, I, I think that this is something that I've heard from, because people are talking about it. And I, 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 I think that we need to be mindful of that. Not withstanding the fact that state law mandates, or state law sets the floor for the, as to what we can do. With requiring parking, that's realistic in terms of the people, that, the, the size of the lot and the number of dwelling units on that lot. And I, I do understand that, that this is a, perhaps a problem. That Vacaville has, is not currently dealing with elsewhere, but I, I do. I would like to see a specific plan for what, so Tyra, I'll just ask specifically, you know, if, if you can bring back some options for us to, to look at. And, and to include in our standards, that that would be helpful. The last comment I'll make is that I, I, I noticed that in your really great write-up about our general plan process. It was, it was really interesting to, to note that the, like the number one thing that OPR looks at is whether the general plan is being actively used. And I, I think that I'd like to see how Vacaville is ensuring that our general plan is relevant. And that people know about it. And that we're also reaching disadvantaged communities and giving them a voice in the process. And some of this is just straight up environmental justice. And I, I do know that, that there are sort of classical views about environmental justice. So maybe it's social justice is what I'm talking about, but including marginalized groups in the process, making it easier for them. To, to weigh in on their communities and their health. That I'd like to see options, maybe a grid for how we can measure and, and provide for, for community involvement.
Thank you for those comments. We'll definitely take that in consideration, especially with the creation of the environmental justice element.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Before I go to Mr. Beaumont and Aldrich, both have their hands up. Just a couple of quick comments here, and starting off with what the Vice Chair was talking about for parking. And it's interesting, with some of the transportation issues. I've heard some discussion of putting parking caps rather than floors on. To try and keep down the number of cars that people can have in order to force them to use alternative forms of transportation. Whether that's transit or bike and ped. So there are certainly some regional pressures and state pressures to do the opposite. Of that, of requiring more parking, but to forbid more parking. And we are somewhat caught in the middle of that as a suburban community. You know, that's just more of an observation. I do note that one of the new bills that is talked about in Tyra's report is SB 602 from Grayson. Which would require that agencies impose fees on housing development proportion to the square footage. And I've heard some members of the development community say, they think that Vacaville's AB 1600 fees are out of bounds. Because they're so similar, no matter what your square footage is. And if that is something that we actually have to do, that could really affect how we charge fees, if the fees have to be smaller for smaller units. So I think that will be important for us in the future. The last one that I want to actually ask a question on, on the implementation table. Page 28 of 29, looking at safety element A 7.2. Which talks about identify and regularly update emergency access routes. And that being done as part of our local hazard mitigation plan. And that shows is something only for the fire department and police department. I think that's a mistake. I think that's something that community development should also be looking at. Because when we review and approve subdivisions, we should be looking at whether there's adequate emergency access in and out. And whether a new project will have especially traffic and access impacts on an emergency access and emergency evacuation route. So I think that should be the city departments to look at it, or fire, police and community development. And I'd like to make sure when new subdivisions come in front of us, that we look at whether the projects are impacting emergency access and evacuation routes. So that's my thoughts. I see that Commissioner Beaumont had his hand up again. And then Commissioner Aldrich and Wendy, your hand isn't down. So I'm not sure if you have other comments, but right now I'm going to go ahead and return control to Doug. Doug, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Tyra, just a quick question on annexation. Just wondering, can the city use eminent domain to annex properties?
Ooh, I'm not sure if I'm qualified to answer that question. I can answer it from a different perspective. And that is, I am not familiar with any type of eminent domain in order to allow for additional residential or other type of development. My understanding that eminent domain is really limited in scope. And it's typically limited to things that the city needs to have, and that usually relates to infrastructure.
So what you're saying to me is that just for housing, it wouldn't be a question of eminent domain, it'd be just a negotiation with the owners?
That is my understanding, but please note, I am not an attorney.
This is Director Erin Morris. I don't think a city, I, I've never really known of a city that has used that eminent domain tool as it relates to growing the city's boundary. Typically, cities don't purchase property to then grow the boundary. It's more private developers and property owners are the ones that typically seek annexation. And so in that situation, you've got a willing property owner who wants to be part of a city. Possibly with a team of developers that want to turn that land into something different. So eminent domain is, at least in my experience with the city of San Jose, a little bit the city of Santa Rosa, is more about infill sites. Where the city is trying to catalyze something to happen versus things happening at the end of the city. And I don't know if that fully answers your question, Commissioner Beaumont, but we can try again if we need to.
No, that's great. I just wondered if it was a common practice, but it doesn't sound like it is. So thank you.
Commissioner Aldrich, you have the floor again.
Um, yes, I have one more thing on page 73. Concerning the military housing on Vanden Road. I'm just kind of curious as to how the city is going to build military-only housing. And who's going to control that? Will Travis Air Force Base control that? Will the city try to control military housing? I guess we got 8.4 acres donated to the city for development of military housing. And I'd just like to know how that's going to work, please.
Well, I'll start off, I'm answering this, and then I'd like to turn it over to Housing Director Kentu. The name you are referencing is an older name. When we originally acquired that property as part of another development within the South Town development area. It was identified for military housing, and thus that's where the name originated. It is my understanding that since that time, that identification has been changed. So now it is open for multifamily housing. Now, if you would like to know anything more about this site, I would like to remind you that Housing Director Kentu is here. And I'm sure she'd be more than happy to expand upon that.
Oh, no, I think that's. Oh, Emily, okay.
Jen, if you feel your question's been answered, great.
I think it has been, the, the staff report that I got here in front of me doesn't say that that has been changed to not military housing anymore. So yes, my question is answered. It's not military housing anymore. So thank you very much.
Emily, any additional input?
Just real quick, thank you very much for the invitation to speak and for the question. So I think what Tyra is referring to is that there, there is no deed restriction on the property that requires military housing. However, the property was donated to the city to provide housing for military households. So to date, you know, the most recent direction received regarding that property has been to absolutely include a military component. And most recently, we've had talks with affordable housing providers. That are looking at building housing that would target kind of the incomes based on jobs over at Travis. Talking to the military housing office and kind of creating the partnership to the extent they can. That those type of efforts are, will continue.
Thank you for that information.
Commissioner Brecken, your hand is still up. Do you have additional comments at this point before I go to the public?
Yeah, just real quick, there's a PowerPoint presentation by Goldfarb Lipman Attorneys. And that's on SB 9. It was given in September of 2021. And they say that a parking space, an agency may require one parking space per unit. And the exception to that is if you're near a high-quality transit corridor or major transit stop. So it seems that that could be applied to the SB 9 housing. But I mean, it's a PowerPoint, so it's not like that's a legal opinion. Also, I had a question that I'm not remembering right now. Maybe we should just go to the public. Thank you.
Actually, Vice Chair Klein has his hand up, so he gets the floor again.
I just have one question for anyone that can answer it. Is there, is there any ability to restrict services such as Airbnb? In areas that receive SB 9 benefits?
Oh, I, I honestly am not prepared to answer that question. That's not something that was really included in tonight's discussion or our topic. So that's something that we would definitely have to come back to you with.
Okay, good, because it, it occurs to me that, that there would be some love, some degree of speculative behavior. From everyone who's not necessarily interested in solving the housing crisis. Okay, so it'd be great to see how our, our other policies are going to be comprehensive in addition to the parking issues. Thank you.
So at this point, I am going to go to the public. I see there's two people listed as attendees. And see if either of them has a question or comments on this item. I don't see either person raising a hand. I'll go to the secretary and ask if there's anybody on the phone or that she's aware of that wishes to address the commission of this.
Chair, I see no one.
Okay, then I'm going to close off the public comment and return to the commission for any. This isn't really an action item so much as it is receive and provide feedback before this goes on to the city council. But as our chance for any closing comments before we wrap this one up, Commissioner Brecken, you still have the floor. Go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to say that I sort of echo what Chair McCollough was saying about, you know, emergency exit and access to developments. And it's something I've thought of a lot ever since LNU complex, Lightning Complex Fire. And I'm not sure, you know, there's, there's things that, I, I know that Office of Emergency Services. And the State Fire Marshal, and there's all kinds of resources to do fire prevention plans and strategies for. I, I would like, I would like a study, if, if we could, for Planning Commission on what the city is doing in that regard. As far as, you know, housing near wildland areas, we have all, all kinds of housing. I was, my house was a half mile from the fire, and if the wind hadn't changed. We probably wouldn't be here today, as far as the house wouldn't be here. But so I just kind of wanted to hear as far as new housing that's going near wildland, you know, what is the approach? I know what the approach is now is the same approach we were using before the LNU complex fire. So I'm wanting to know if there's new ideas for new approaches. And certainly the, you know, exit strategies, evacuation routes and such. Is that something that we can do in the future?
This is Director Morris. I wanted to provide a response to that. And Wendy, I appreciate the heads up you gave us ahead of the meeting on this one. Because we were able to touch base with our fire department, who shared the good news that there is a countywide wildfire protection plan being developed. And this is being led by the Solano Office, County Office of Emergency Services. And it's actually, they received a substantial grant. They didn't have the exact figure, but it was possibly even more than six figures. To actually tackle this on a county-wide basis, because it's so important recognizing Vacaville's connectivity with lands around it and other jurisdictions. So that's something that will, will be started soon. And there's a lot of protective actions planned as part of that plan. It's not just about getting people out when we need to get people out. But there will be a coordinated evacuation plan component to the work of Solano County OES. So more on that when we know more, but the grant was awarded, they are going to get going, and our fire department feels enthusiastic. This is going to be great for lots of different reasons for this community. And the second part, which doesn't touch on new development exactly, but it's more like for everyone. The fire department has developed, actually adopted a CAL FIRE program called Ready, Set, Go. And this is a toolkit that helps residents prepare for wildfire events. And right now, it's primarily informational material, so you can find on the fire department's webpage. The city did apply for a grant because the goal and the dream was to actually promote this program more. And then also implement some specific fuel reduction, but unfortunately, we were not awarded the grant. That said, after speaking to our fire marshal, they are continuing to look for grant funding to promote the Ready, Set, Go program. And they are very excited about kicking off this Solano County effort.
Awesome.
And Erin, you can certainly count the, the chair as somebody who's interested and seen more of that coming from the commission.
Noted, and yes.
Wendy, anything else before we wrap it up? Wendy, anything else before we wrap it up?
Well, I just wanted to underscore that we have areas that are underserved by grocery stores and farmers markets and community gardens. I mean, just like lacking healthy food and they basically have to drive from the newer areas, I think mainly, I mean, my take is like South Town, they have to drive all the way out, you know, towards I eighty or. So I understand that that's being linked to the environmental justice element. And we'll be thinking about it till twenty twenty four. Isn't that something that we can link now to new development without even doing that? Or I guess I'm confused on that. If if somebody could respond.
Again, this is Director Morris. I do have a little response that Planning Manager Bivon helped me with. Actually, the new land use development code that the city council just did, the first reading of the ordinance allows grocery stores and other food related uses as a permitted use in all of our commercial zoning district. And that is a change from the previous. What that doesn't get at is something that might be part of our environmental justice element, which is something I actually worked on when I was working in Sonoma County, which is actually programs and policies that help get food into even unusual places within existing underserved neighborhoods. So more on that with the environmental justice element. But as a starting point, our newly almost adopted land use development code does make it very easy for new grocery stores to open in our existing commercial areas or to build new stores and to not have to go through a use permit process basically in order to make it happen.
Okay, all right. Thank you. I think, I mean, that's, I have a lot of other questions, but I think I could just go offline and maybe talk with you, Director Morris, or with other staff. Because we have upcoming, you know, the EJ and other elements, the housing element, and just kind of looking for ways of community engagement and maybe how to organize it under focus areas, things like that. But I appreciate all your efforts. Thank you.
And Erin, I would expect that whether it's this meeting or the next, we talk about future agendas, be reminded of some of those meetings. And what is the status on the annual report? When does this go to the city council? Director, when does this go to the city council?
I was asking Tyra, because I can't remember the exact date, but I know we already have it plotted. Tyra, do you recall the date for council?
We are going to go into the city council next month. I don't recall if we settle on one date or the other. I think that's largely going to be dependent on the length of the agenda.
Okay, well, thank you, staff and and commission members for a thorough discussion of this item. And that wraps up item number seven, business. And we move on to item number eight, which is status report on development and major projects. So Erin or your staff, go ahead and make your presentations.
Thank you, Chair McCauley and members of Planning Commission. I am going to tackle the Building Division report and then turn it over to other folks on my team to cover the planning report. So just the Building Division, as you may recall, we do have an interim building official helping keep things going. Still a little bit understaffed over there, but still somehow last month, we generated one million plus dollars in permit fees. Three hundred and sixty seven building permits were issued, and that included fourteen permits for new single family homes and accessory dwelling units. And a very small team of inspectors, when I emphasize that, completed one thousand forty eight inspections. So it is busy in the Building Division, and the team there, a very small team, is really producing phenomenal work. Other notes from last month included solar permits, one hundred and twenty seven of those, most of them online. We did fourteen final inspections for single family homes, and that that concludes the Building Division report. The next one, advanced planning, will be presented by Senior Planner Hayes.
Thank you. So I think I've given you the Planning Commission a pretty comprehensive overview of what advanced planning is currently working on. The majority of the recommended priority tasks will at least originate in advanced planning, and it will be shared amongst all the city departments. So right now, the biggest items on my plate are our housing element updates. And we will be receiving our first work product for staff review at the end of March. And as I had mentioned, we're also going to be having a joint meeting between the Planning Commission and City Council on March twenty ninth. Aside from working on the housing element, we're also trying to figure out how to work on the downtown specific plan, implementation plan, while also working or beginning work on our municipal service review. And that concludes the board of advanced planning. Thank you.
Good evening, Commission. This is Albert Inall, Senior Planner, here to give you an update on current planning activities during the month of January. So we saw some activity in various districts. In District One, we saw a change to the Nut Tree Apartments, an application was submitted. That's the apartment project that's behind the Nut Tree Retail area. Has a different builder that's looking at constructing the project now, and they submitted an application to modify the exterior elevations and some of the building footprint locations. So that's being reviewed by our department right now. For District Two, the city reviewed a solar array project at the Eastley Wastewater Treatment Plant located at sixty forty Vacca Station Road. And that project was approved. We also reviewed a couple of other smaller projects in District Two. There is a parcel map for BP Arco Station off of Orange Drive and Leisure Town Road. That is the developer splitting up the parcels to help get that ready for a potential future project. In District Six, the Vannen Gate Development located off of Vannen Road, south of Almo Drive, has continued to see some interest by the applicant Discovery Homes. They've submitted a time extension request to extend the original plan development approval for the Vannen Gate House Plans. They're requesting for a two year time extension for those house plans. There's forty three lots that they build those house plans on, or in the middle of reviewing that application. We saw a lot of activity with plot plans, and we performed various inspections for subdivisions, including Roberts Ranch, Brighton Landing, Vannen Meadows, and Farbstead Development. And that is it for current planning.
Thank you very much. Questions for staff? Mr. Beaumont? Mr. Beaumont dropped his hand.
Wait, I'm sorry.
Wait, okay, go ahead, Doug.
I was muted. Albert, at Orange Drive and Leisure Town Road, we already have three commercial businesses that provide gas and stuff. So what is, what are we adding another gas station for?
It's not a gas station that's being added, but from time to time, when gas stations get developed, they'll build on a portion of that site, the fueling station. And then there'll be a remainder site that's left over, and to make things easier for future development, they split that parcel in half, so that way the separate parcel that has no development can be sold off to some other builders. So that's what's going on with that project.
Man, it seems like we're building too much of one thing there to me. Thank you.
Vice Chair Klein.
Thank you. I'm gonna, all gratitude to Commissioner Aldrich for this question. What's up with five G? Is there?
I have, I don't know.
Well, I'm, I'm, what do you, I mean, should we, now's the time to ask about it, I guess, because five G ruled out in twenty twenty one, or twenty twenty two, rather. Does anyone on the staff have any?
I have a very, this is Director Morris. I have a very brief update, which is the city is working on a broadband master plan, which is looking at communication pretty broadly, and I do not know if five G is part of that mix. So please don't let me start a rumor there. But Vice Chair Klein, I'm happy to follow up with our Deputy City Manager, George Ann Mager Smith, and find out more about whether that is at all part of that bucket of work. But there, there, there really are, they got an RFP out on that, and they're working on selecting a consultant again to improve communication citywide, but I'll get back to you on the five D piece, maybe at the next planning commission meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm interested also.
Commissioner Brecken.
I just wanted to ask Director Morris. So we had one meeting of the Housing Subcommittee, and that went really well. And just wondering what the plans are for future meetings.
Thank you for that question, Commissioner Brecken. As a staff, we thought that meeting went very well, too. Right now, our plan is to schedule that meeting following the joint study session, because that's going to be a big work effort to get that all pulled together. And we already do have some topics in mind for that meeting. So stay tuned. We are working on scheduling the second of at least three subcommittee meetings focused around the housing element.
And that's probably not a bad thing leading into our next discussion, which is the directors' reports, including tentative schedules and announcements. So I guess you get to keep the floor, Erin.
Thank you, Chair McCauley and commissioners. Okay, so going through council actions pertaining to Planning Commission items. Last week, February eighth was a big night at council. The council unanimously, with one recusal, adopted the downtown specific plan, which was very exciting for all of us. And they also introduced the ordinance for the Land Use and Development Code, which is basically just needs to get a second reading, and and we're off to getting it fully in place. And then the council also approved the Allison Apartments project, as noted earlier in the presentation. We have a big upcoming item on March eighth, which is the appointment of planning commissioners. So more on that very soon. I think that concludes the council's actions and upcoming items. So I'm going to go to item B, which is the tentative schedule for Planning Commission items. We have the Oak Grove planned to come to all of us at a special meeting next Monday. And thank you all for making yourself, not next Monday, the Monday after next Monday, February twenty eighth. And thank you to everyone for making yourself available for that project. On March fifteenth, we'll be swearing in what we're saying are the new planning commissioners, and we'll know who those folks are shortly. And then March sixteenth to eighteenth, mark your calendars, because our commissioners will be invited to attend the Planning Commissioner Academy. The timing is a little bit compressed with the selection of the commission. But if selected, we're hoping that you all and those selected would be able to attend the academy. It's going to be in San Ramon this year, and the city would be paying, has paid all the registration fees. You would just need to travel there. So part of that academy is they offer really good training for both new and seasoned commissioners. And then there'll also be staff training of new and continuing commissioners as part of the onboarding process. So those are the Planning Commission items. Before I go to announcements, are there any questions about the Planning Commission items?
Just to make sure I understand the timing of new commissioners. If they would be sworn in on the fifteenth, any current members of the commission who are not reappointed tonight would be their last meeting. Is that a true statement?
The last, the last meeting of the current seven that are here now is absolutely February twenty eighth. We want all of you to be there because you all are still commissioners on February twenty eighth. If and when things change, then for those that are not reappointed, February twenty eighth would be your last meeting.
Got it. Thank you for the clarification. Any questions for the director? Looks like none. Onto announcements, and then we'll wrap up.
Okay, and I will make this as brief as possible, but there are some staffing changes I want the commission to be aware of. So on the recruitment side, we do have our chief building official interview scheduled for this Friday. This is the first part of the interview process. We got a really good response to that recruitment. I think we have really excellent candidates, and so I'm hoping to be able to announce the new chief building official probably within the next two to three weeks, presuming that the person accepts my offer, whoever they are. And that's going to be very important to get, keep our building division running. We're also currently recruiting for an assistant director to help me with this department and all the things that we are trying to do for the city. And so that recruitment's out there, and we'll close in a couple of weeks if you know anyone interested in helping out over here. And then on the other side, we did have, we have one planner who departed and another one who's announced her departure. So Assistant Planner Maya Amici has left and moved on to a different job. So we were actually able to offer the position to someone that was on our list, and he should be starting this month. And I can't wait to introduce him once he gets here. And then Senior Planner Christina Love is actually after fourteen years with the City of Vacaville. She is moving on to a new, pretty great job elsewhere. So we will be working to fill that senior planner position and kind of rebuild the team from there. So I guess the theme here is change, recruitment, departure, change. On a broader note, our city hall is reopening tomorrow to in-person assistance. So and that means we will start seeing people kind of coming in and out of our doors more freely than it has been over the last three to four weeks. So we're still doing building permit by appointment only, and we're still really encouraging all of our online and phone services, because they've been working really well, and they are time efficient for our customers. But our doors will be unlocked starting tomorrow. The February twentieth Planning Commission meeting, we will not have you on video. We're just going to continue how we've been doing things until after the new appointments, and we'll kind of assess from there. So you'll be invisible on the twenty eighth, just to give everyone a heads up on that. We know that at some point, there will be a pivot to either video on Zoom meetings or in-person meetings. And I promise we'll keep the Planning Commission apprised as that changes. But for now, we'll do what we've been doing, at least through the end of February. And those were my announcements. If anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Yes, that I look forward to the in-person meetings. It will be so nice to get back together for those. This is the time for commissioner comments before we adjourn. Any commissioners have comments they would like to make? Seeing no hands up, then we will see everyone on Zoom at our special meeting on Monday, February twenty eighth, twenty twenty two. And this meeting is adjourned. Good night, Vacaville.